All right, call to order of the December 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Will anyone please stand and will Commissioner Barto please lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Please put your right hand over your heart. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, staff, roll call, please.
All commissioners are present this evening.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is public comments. This is a time when we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item, requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are no requests tonight.
I'm sorry?
There are no requests.
Thank you. All right, next item is consent items. Item number one is the minutes at the November 21st, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from this, from the November 2021st, 2024 meeting? I believe we do have some comments from Mr. Mojer. Commissioners, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with Mr. Mojer's edits.
I'll second.
Thank you, call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, our next item, public hearing items. Item number two is the Uchi Sushi Restaurant. This is PA 2024-0068. The site location is 2510 and 2536 West Coast Highway. Staff, do we have a presentation this evening?
Before we begin, I have to recuse to do a financial interest in a property within 500-foot proximity.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair Rosin and commissioners. My name is Jenny Tran and I'm the planner for the Uchi Sushi Restaurant project. This is for a conditional use permit and coastal development permit. This project is located at 2510 West Coast Highway, along West Coast Highway with Avon Street in the back. It also includes an off-site parking location at 2436 West Coast Highway, shown on the right side. Start foot some background, in February of 2021, the site had an approval for a mixed-use development for a multifamily residential and a commercial office building. Later in March of 2023, there was an approval to convert the office building to a grocery store, and then later in February 2024, a building permit was issued, and the site is currently under construction with the anticipated completion year of 2026. This project is for a conditional use permit for a new fine dining restaurant in that commercial component of the mixed-use development. It includes a Type 47 ABC license and off-site parking. As an added note, there is no request for late hours, live entertainment or dancing, or outdoor dining. There's also requests for a coastal development permit as this is an intensification of use in the coastal zone. Because this property is in the coastal zone, the parking rate is using the one parking space per a range of 30 to 50 square feet of net public area. This restaurant includes a net public area of 2,400 square feet, so 48 parking spaces are required using the one per 50 square foot of net public area rate, and this rate was determined through a parking evaluation that was provided as part of the project. 16 parking spaces will be provided onsite and 32 parking spaces will be provided off-site. All of the parking spaces will be valet parked. This shows the onsite parking. Highlighted in pink are the 16 onsite parking spaces. Patrons will drive onto the property and valet staff will guide them to park in one of these parking spaces onsite. Over on the right, top right in green are four queuing spaces, so if, once the parking site is full, patrons will park their car there and valet staff will then drive the cars to the off-site parking lot. This is the off-site parking lot at 2436 West Coast Highway, so 32 of the 38 striped parking spaces on this property will be dedicated for Uchi Restaurant. The restaurant hours will not conflict with uses on the property as the property is developed with commercial office buildings that typically operate during the daytime, and the restaurant is proposing dinnertime hours to not conflict with the onsite commercial uses. Further, the onsite parking will be used first to allow for vehicles to exit this property so that there's no overlap of people leaving this site and people parking for the restaurant. This map shows the subject property on the left and the off-site parking on the right, and showing the ingress and egress to and from the property. It will be through Avon Street towards the back to ensure that there's no added traffic on West Coast Highway for the valet parking. The relevant conditions of approval is to provide 16 parking spaces maintained onsite and 32 parking spaces maintained off-site. Additionally, a parking agreement is required to be recorded for the off-site parking. Valet operations and vehicle queuing are prohibited from impacting any public right-of-ways, and to further ensure no conflict in hours, the hours of operations are conditioned to be between 5:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. daily. This approval does not permit the premises to operate as a bar, tavern, cocktail lounge, or nightclub, and there is no live entertainment or dancing. The recommended actions by staff is to conduct a public hearing, find this project exempt from CEQA under Class 1 of the CEQA guidelines, and adopt the resolution to approve the conditional use permit and coastal development permit. Thank you commissioners, I'm available for questions. The applicant is also available for any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, none. Any ex parte communications, starting with Commissioner Barto?
None.
None for me?
None.
None for me?
None.
None.
All right, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Thank you commissioners for allowing me to speak here. We started this project many years ago and got it approved for an office building.
Sorry, please state your name for the record.
I'm Mark Machete, I'm the owner of the project. We got it approved for an office building and then all of the neighbors asked us to come back to city and ask to be used for other commercial uses, so we got it approved for a grocery store. And unfortunately, the space is too small for a grocery store to operate out of there economically, so we started looking for other tenants and we found Uchi Restaurant, which has got many, many locations throughout the United States, a very high-end Japanese-American type of cuisine. So we started working with the city to try to get this project approved and bring them on board. They have signed the lease pending the approval from the commission, and we're hoping that we will get the approval so we can start the building project and build to their finishes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Machete. Have you reviewed the conditions of approval and agree with them?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm good, Chair.
All right, thank you. Then seeing none, does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this item? Thank you, Mr. Machete. All right, seeing none. I guess there's no comments from staff then, then I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, just wish to discuss this or maybe make a motion?
Just tiny housekeeping item. I saw number 44 and 48 are duplicative on the conditions, so we just need to clean that up, but otherwise look good.
Okay. Entertaining a motion?
I don't, I don't have any concerns with the project. Actually, I think it is a very clean application and I'm happy to make a motion to approve, so I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, call for vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, congratulations to the applicant. The next item, item number three, this is the Five Crowns Appeal. Oh, go ahead.
Chair Rosin, I'll be recusing myself from this agenda item. I don't have a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act. However, as you probably know, my wife was recently elected by the voters of Newport Beach City Council. We'll resume, we'll assume office next week. Whatever the Planning Commission's decision tonight, it would be, it has the potential to be appealed and I just don't want to have an image of impartiality if it does go there, so I'll step away.
Thank you, Commissioner Barto.
Let's see, Commissioner Harris come back?
Oh yeah. Could you ask Commissioner Harris? I don't know if he can hear us or not. There he is. Okay. Next item is item number three. This is the Five Crowns Appeal, PA 2023-0202. The site location is 3801 East Coast Highway. Staff, do we have a presentation this evening?
Yes, good evening Chairman, Commissioners, Melinda Wayland, Planning Division. This is the appeal to the Planning Commission for the Five Crowns temporary outdoor dining. The project location is on East Coast Highway. It shows the existing Five Crowns restaurant and their existing off-site parking. This is the zoning map and it shows the Five Crowns restaurant is along East Coast Highway within the commercial corridor of Corona Del Mar, which is the pink color, and this area of Corona Del Mar historically is a budding residential, so it's a mixed-use area. Five Crowns restaurant was opened in 1965, including a piano bar and outdoor dining. In 1977, a use permit was required for in addition to the, of office area and kitchen area, and it established required parking for the site, which was the 87 spaces required with valet. The original use permit did not include conditions of approval for hours of operation, live entertainment, or outdoor dining area, but it did have the, an existing outdoor dining patio adjacent to an exterior garden area at the rear of the property, and historically ancillary private events have been held at the restaurant, indoor and outdoor. So during COVID pandemic, the city provided a program called the Emergency Temporary Use Permit, and it was provided to support businesses, especially restaurants, to allow their operations exterior of their normal use. Five Crowns was issued an emergency permit in 2020, and it allowed the expanded outdoor dining area within the existing covered patio and garden area. Their ETUP expired on, in 2021, and the applicant has since applied for a limited-term permit prior to applying for a conditional use permit amendment to maintain the expanded outdoor dining area. So this is a more zoomed-in site plan. It shows the existing restaurant, the existing outdoor dining, and the expanded outdoor dining area. The property directly south, the residential property, is also owned in common with the restaurant property, and both have been owned by the Lowry's since the 1970s. So just to go over the proposed limited-term permit, the expanded area goes into the garden area at the rear of the restaurant. It does include private weekend events with live entertainment ending by 10:00 p.m., and then the expanded outdoor dining will close by 9:00 p.m. during the weekdays and 10:00 p.m. on the weekends. It includes design features to mitigate noise pursuant to the noise reports, including a sound wall, acoustical paneling, and limiting the type and location of equipment. And this is, the limited term is a limited term that will expire in June 2025 with a potential extension through December 2025, and to keep the expanded use of the outdoor area with special events, it would require a use permit amendment for, after the expiration of the limited-term permit. The limited-term permit went to the zoning administrator in July. The applicant provided an original noise report only for the expanded dining, and then provided a second noise report, but it was just a couple days short of the hearing, so the zoning administrator continued the item to August. And the item was heard at the August 15th, 2024 hearing, and the applicant provided an updated noise report and added additional design features mitigating noise, including the type of equipment and monitoring of the private events. The zoning administrator approved the item with several additional conditions, including controlling exterior lighting, limiting the private events to four times per month with 75 people, and a time limit on implementing the design features to mitigate the noise, and also limiting the loading and deliveries to the site. An appeal was filed by Kenneth and Kim Cantanzri, and the overarching issues of the appeal are the use of the limited-term permit as a temporary permit versus requiring an amendment to the use permit at this time, and the restaurant operating without a permit, the history of complaints for the outdoor area, besides hours and noise from the private events with the live entertainment, and inconsistency with the emergency temporary use permit conditions, and adequacy of the noise reports. The staff report goes into great detail responding to all of the appellant's concerns, but I'm going to go over the major issues. So the first one is the temporary versus the use permit amendment. The limited-term permit was a process provided by the city to transition the COVID patios, which were approved by the emergency permits, while preparing amendments to the use permit to keep the patios. So the emergency permits were approved with standard conditions of approval without diving deep into the existing use permits. All of them had closing hours of 9:00 p.m. and prohibited live entertainment. The amendment to the use permit would be required prior to expiration of the limited-term permit to keep the expanded patio and private events, and an amendment would also include a parking study to address additional parking required for expanded patio and private events. Limited-term permits do not require additional parking as they are temporary. And the private events are typically ancillary uses to restaurants. The use of the outdoor area for private events on a permanent basis requires an amendment to the use permit. And to go over the complaints, code enforcement has gone out to the site throughout the last few years on complaints of noise. There's an intermittent history of noise complaints. 2021, there was one. 2023, there was one notice of violation and one citation, which was overturned by a hearing officer. And 2024, there's been four complaints with unconfirmed noise levels and one notice of violation. There have been longer periods of time without complaints, and there's also police records showing five noise complaints in 2023 and zero in 2024. And the complaint history does demonstrate there's a potential need to mitigate noise at the site, and the limited-term permit does provide the mechanism to add conditions to the existing use permit and to test if this use could be a good permanent use for the restaurant. And then going over the adequacy of the noise reports. So the applicant has revised the noise reports a few times to ensure there is adequate mitigation of the noise. The original design features included a sound wall, updating a gate to be sound attenuated, acoustical paneling, dense shrubbery and speaker location requirements, and then the latest and updated noise report added additional design features, including limiting the type of equipment and follow-up analysis and monitoring of the private events. These design features will be tested in the field and will confirm the adequacy of the report. Noncompliance with these would lead to code enforcement action and potential citations. And now to go over the basis for staff's recommendation to uphold the zoning administrator's approval. The limited-term permit provides a trial period for the operator, and it gives, provides additional conditions on hours and private events with entertainment. So it's a temporary update to the use permit that was approved back in 1977 and does need a relook when they're ready to apply for the use permit amendment, which will be required if they want to keep the outdoor dining and the private events. There are substantial design features included and conditioned that will reduce the noise, and this is a historical business in a commercial corridor, and the complaints and the police record are not abnormal when you have the commercial businesses along Coast Highway adjacent to the residences. Staff's recommendation is to conduct a de novo public hearing and find the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15301 under Class 1 Existing Facilities and adopt Resolution Number PC 2024-027. The applicant is here and has a presentation prepared, and they also have archaic engineering here with a representative for any questions on the noise reports. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
One question. Are you able to show this, where the abandoned alley area was back from the original approval? I apologize, I should have probably asked staff this earlier this week. And was everything vacated and abandoned since then? Thank you.
On our map right now.
Okay, staying on the slide, what was this outdoor, expanded outdoor area used for prior to 2020?
I could have the applicant address that in detail, but I believe it's just been a rear garden area that they've had at the restaurant all along. It's part of the private property.
Was it used for events or anything in the past?
They do have photos showing that historically they have used it for private events, but nothing was officially established.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, then we'll go ahead and report any ex parte communication. I had met with the applicant at the property. I had a conversation with the applicant's representative?
I met at the property with the applicant.
I met with the applicant.
None. I met with the applicant.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Do you state your name for the record?
My name is Ryan Wilson.
Ryan, how much time do you think you're going to need this evening?
Wow, I personally probably need eight to 10 minutes. I can go a lot longer if we want to spend time in history class, but...
Why don't we go ahead and hold this to 10 minutes, please, and then in an effort to be equitable, we'll give the appellant the same amount of time. That would include the consultants in that 10-minute timeframe, so please go ahead.
Understood. Thank you Chair Rosin and the commissioners. I also want to thank staff who've spent a considerable amount of time on this situation with us over the last year and a half. So I'm here to speak a little bit about the Five Crowns and the history of my family's restaurant. Five Crowns, the building we know today as Five Crowns was built sometime in the early 1920s by Matilda McCulloch and her daughter Marguerite. It's clear that that's where we got the name Marguerite Street from Tilly's daughter. The original building, yeah, was built in the 1920s. In this old picture behind the trees, I don't know if the laser works, oh, you can see the Caretaker's Cottage, which is still there. It's the adjoining property behind the restaurant. That was built in about 1918. In roughly the 30s, it was operated as a country inn and restaurant. Later in the 50s, it became a restaurant known as the Hurly Bell, and then in 1964, my grandparents took over the lease, opened up the Five Crowns in 1965. This area of Orange County, as some of you may know, was known for a lot of celebrity traffic. Laguna was a big hotspot, and so Corona Del Mar was a little sleepier, and it was known for being a place where you could take friends, people you didn't want to, you know, known to be public with, into the restaurant there. So it's got an illustrious history. In fact, the Caretaker's Cottage, at one point in the early 40s, was busted as being a gambling establishment, and in the restaurant, there's a fabulous old picture of roulette tables in the, what is now the cottage and a rental property for the family. In 1965, my grandfather opened up the restaurant, took over the control of the property on behalf of the Frank and Vandy Camp families. These are, the picture on the bottom, on the left, is Lawrence Frank, my great-grandfather, and the gentleman on the right is Walter Vandy Camp, his cousin. The two of them started a business in 1915, actually selling potato chips originally in downtown Los Angeles. That business became Vandy Camp's Bakery, which was Lawrence's primary business, and then alongside he opened up restaurants. In 1938, he opened Lowry's The Prime Rib, created the Lowry's Seasoned Salt for that restaurant, and then his son, Richard Nathan Frank, opened Five Crowns in 1965. And Richard Nathan Frank, my grandfather, was the one who really grew the business, the brand, and ultimately sold the spice business back in 1979. We have retained now four restaurants in the U.S. and the Five Crowns since 1965. Our oldest restaurant is the Tammy Shander up on Los Feliz Boulevard, and it's 102 years old in June of last year. So Five Crowns, April 14th, 1965. We are going to be celebrating our Diamond Anniversary next year, a pretty incredible milestone for any business, any business in California, and certainly a family-owned and operated business for the legacy of this restaurant. I am today, fourth generation in my family to manage the business and CEO of Lowry's Restaurants. I started working at Five Crowns in 2003 after graduating from undergrad. I spent about six months there as a prep cook and then left our family business for about eight years, went on fine dining in Northern California and in Europe, then returned in 2009 to be the opening chef and kind of culinary creator of the Side Door concept, which is amazingly going to be 15 years old. Actually, it was 15 years old about last week. I grew up in Northern California, but have lived in, in, in Orange County for over 15 years. In fact, I lived behind the restaurant in the cottage, the old Caretaker's Cottage, for seven years and raised my two girls there. Today, I office in the restaurant. It's still very much my, my baby, and I am an integral part of, of the leadership and management of the business. So as Ms. Wayland pointed out, in October 31st, we worked with the city and applied for this limited-term permit with the full expectation of coming back and working with the city on a proper use permit. I think that's beneficial to everyone, and frankly, as an operator, I'd love to have a clearer idea of what our operating uses are. We were looking to create documented use and permitted use of the backyard area, which has been in operation for decades. I've been active at the restaurant for over 20 years, and we have been throwing weddings and parties on that space for the entirety of that time. and parties on that space for the entirety of that time. We like to say we have a wedding a weekend and it's been an incredibly important piece of our revenue model, as well as it's, I believe, a really important piece of the fabric and legacy of this dining establishment within our community. This is a picture from 1968 that's hanging in the hallways of the offices upstairs in the restaurant. And closer look, you can see my grandfather, Richard Nathan Frank, speaking to a group of coworkers and other guests on the garden patio space in 1968. As a part of this limited-term permit, as staff has pointed out, we've done two rounds of sound engineering analyses with the express intent to recognize how we can be a better neighbor. I think this is a really important piece of it, that we've heard the comments from the neighbors and we're ready to make a significant investment in sound walls, curtains, other sort of ballasts to just continue our operations, but do so in a way that we're going to be enhancing the neighborhood and continuing to add, I think, a great amenity and asset to the community. And Brian Estrada with RK Engineering is here to answer any questions as well. As we pointed out back in August, and we had an approval from zoning administrator Zadeba. Within that approval, we agreed to multiple additional use constraints that I think is appropriate and we can continue to build our business and thrive, but gives some recognition for some boundaries to the neighbors and to recognize some of their complaints. And I think it was well incorporated and good work on behalf of the city, neighborhood, and us as the business operator. And again, I think this was decided correctly. We believe it's important to work with the city and get a proper use permit in place. We have been in continuous operation for 60 years and that space is documented operation since 1968, but more specifically for at least the last 20 years as a wedding and party space. I think the idea that events, those sorts of events are somehow separate from regular restaurant operations is not correct and I think it's a critical piece of our business today. Additionally, the conditions that the staff report outline, particularly pertaining to the noise mitigation measures, are right now outside of soft costs, running roughly $450,000. You include the additional legal permitting, sound studies, and we're closing in on close to $700,000 of investment we're willing to make to maintain the use of that space and to continue to have a thriving business in this community. So I think it's critically important that we find a way to get approval on this. As part of this process, I spent many, many days walking the neighborhood, getting an opportunity to meet more of the people in the community. And we've have multiple petitions upwards of 45 to 50 in the community, multiple letters as well, and I believe there are two neighbors as well that are here to speak on our support. This is a community restaurant and it's been thriving for many years and many generations. And it's something that I'm very passionate in maintaining. I've got an eight and nine-year-old daughter and they love the restaurants. So I think the legacy of our time here in business here in Corona Del Mar is critically important. So in conclusion, we respectfully ask that you uphold the zoning administrator's decision. And with that, Brian Estrada is here again to answer any questions on the specific noise study and any other questions from the commissioners.
Mr. Wilson, have you reviewed the condition, the recommended conditions of approval and do you agree with them?
I have reviewed them. I have two points of clarification on the conditions. Number three, I ask for a full year on this limited-term permit for a couple reasons. I think it's important to have more time for us to evaluate the success, I think, of the sound mitigation studies. Moreover, it's going to take us somewhere between 45 and 60 days to install the walls in particular. It's some pretty sophisticated engineering, as well as we have booked events on that space and we need to be working around those events and maintaining our hospitality. Additionally, condition number 10, want to clarify, as we did with the zoning administrator report, that the 75 people is the load on the space in question. So the 1,350 square feet, there'd be 75 people just on that area in question, four times per month.
Okay, thank you for those clarifications. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Vice Chair Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. How long have you, you've obviously been involved your whole life, how long have you guys been hosting similar events to this? You know, before or, you know, during your time there or before, you know, 2020 when the UTEP set up?
Before 2020, I mean, I've recently done an analysis and post 2020, the business has been growing, but consistent with where we've been in the past. And we've been doing a robust private party wedding, birthday event business for at least the last 20 years since I've been a part of that restaurant and been working in the kitchens. Again, it's, we continually say it's a wedding a weekend and that's been a really important part of our business for decades.
Commissioner Langford?
Mr. Wilson, what was it like raising young children next door to the restaurant?
Yes, I brought two little girls home from, well, my wife and I, from Hogue Hospital. And, you know, the noise was off by 10 o'clock and I think it's manageable and understood. And frankly, we saw it as a great opportunity for some energy in the neighborhood. And if anything, the noise of PCH itself, and particularly the loud motorcycles, is more obtrusive, I believe, than the handful of hours of party and revelry next door.
Commissioners, any further questions for the applicant?
In terms of your outreach with the neighbors, it seems like maybe there's been some complaints. Can you just kind of give me some background about understanding of like how much of the neighborhood around you is frustrated or upset with the noise?
My understanding, if you go back and put the map up, sorry to interrupt, but if we can look at the map, there's a majority of the sound projection in the past had been really towards Hazel. We have not received any complaints from the immediately adjacent senior home, Crown Cove. In my understanding, we've really only received complaints from the Katanzerite property. I could not tell you of any other complaints from, at least any direct complaints from anyone else on the street. In my outreach, I've heard comments that at times it can get noisy on a Saturday evening. But again, that's why we're looking to make a big investment in the space and to enhance the soundproofing of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so does the appellant wish to make a presentation this evening? Please state your name for the record.
Sure.
And then just a quick reminder that, and I will reset the clock, that we're going to hold your presentation to 10 minutes, please.
Is there a timer somewhere up?
Yes.
One on here? Maybe it's going up. I see, I see the logo, but not any timer. There you go. Okay, thank you. Ken Katanzerite, resident of 354 and owner of 352 Hazel with my wife, Kim Katanzerite. It is accurate to say, however, that the people objecting and joining in the appeal were Herb and Harriet Melman, who live at 344, immediately next door. So three houses that are adversely impacted. Next door to the Melmans, Melman's is the Barron's residence. Mr. Barron's passed away last year. That house is under reconstruction. That owner is currently in Texas and has not had the pleasure of experiencing the loud raucous carrying on till 10 o'clock at night, hooting, hollering, disc jockeys, live bands carrying on 50 feet away from their house. Imagine that. Each of you has a house, each of you has a backyard. Imagine if your next-door neighbor, 40, 50 feet away, was conducting events with live bands and amplified sound within 40 to 60 feet or 100 feet of your house at, by the way, we've measured them, 75 decibels at ground level and third floor. That we know is to be the case and true. However, some of that testing, for whatever reason, was rejected by the managers of code enforcement. So it is also accurate to say that at the, at the second hearing, first and second hearings, that the objectors included myself, my wife again, Melman, and the, one of the neighbors down the street, whose name presently escapes me. So these are people who are in direct path of the amplified sound. I want to draw a distinction because we cannot conflate what is occurring here. Amplified sound is specifically dealt with by the municipal code. Not a thing is said about the restrictions on amplified sound by the city or the applicant. Nevertheless, there's a specific code provision that says if you have amplified sound, then you must get a permit for the use of equipment associated with that amplified sound and you must shut it off by 8 o'clock. Now, there's also a distinction between a normal crowd and crowd noise associated with the crowd that overtakes as well amplified sound. That was Mr. Dickerson, our expert, our expert opinion and our report, which is cited in both the appeal and also referred to as well with the direct quotation in the reply brief. In that, Mr. Dickerson makes clear that the RK sound and revised sound was, it was subject to a heavy criticism. Why? Because when RK attempted to test at the impacts of 352 and 354 and he came at scant under 55, that he didn't bother to overlay crowd noise. Second, RK's study positioned the speaker in a manner that is not historically used at, was not historically used at Five Crowns. So the sound was redirected directly into the wall, as opposed to more open and available for what we call line of sight equals line of sound travel, meaning the typical placements would impact, adversely impact 40 and 50 and 60 foot away, second floors and third floors. 352 Hazel has a third floor substantially improved with outdoor space, including a large patio in front that is used outside, assuming that they're not blaring away and driving the people off the patio at Five Crowns. So one needs to try to decipher what is really going on here. What's going on here is something that is not authorized by the code. They don't have a sound permit and they don't have a permit. Why is that important? The only permit they have, I believe Mr. Celine asked an appropriate question. You asked, well, how many square feet in that patio, outdoor patio are actually being used and when was it used? The answer's simple. We go through the history of this. He has, he waxes on with a rather nice history, but let's talk about the history of how they got that permit, UP 1822 in 1977. How did they get it? At that time, the patio, outdoor patio was 1,348 square feet, rounded to 1,350 square feet. How much did the wise people, you people, people in your predecessors, how much did they allow them to use in 1977? 348. Why? Because they don't have enough parking. So they had an extra 1,000 feet available. Did they give it to them? No. Not at all. Why? Because we're already giving them a 30 parking space exemption for the parking they had off-site, which was required, parking analysis done back then, wisely employed. 87 spaces. Now, you've been to Five Crowns, we've all been to Five Crowns. I don't go anymore because of, I don't get along with the management. But that space is triple parked and double parked. It is also space that is nine feet on center line. Defective parking space today. 10 feet on center is required. You remeasure, just take the space, multiply it times, times nine feet and divide by 10 and their parking will shrink from 87 allowable legitimate spaces to at best 72. Now, also ask yourself, you saw a presentation first, I believe it was presentation number two, and presentation number two said, okay, even the current parking is one space per 50 square feet. So they went away from people, bodies and counted, and counted square footage. Divide 50 into 5,800 square feet, which is what he's asking for. That requires 129 spaces. I want to make sure I got my math right. I don't want to get that wrong for you. 116 spaces. Subtract 87, he's got, he's 29 short. I estimated it for purposes of the reply brief and I came up with 33, using a rule of thumb of 2.3 persons per space. 75 people, we had an event, extra 33. Round it to 30. He doesn't have any parking. They say, well, we don't need to talk about parking when it comes to a temporary permit. Where? Where's that in the code? Every single use talks about you can't, you typically temporary space. You've got to demonstrate parking. There's no demonstration of parking here. This is not a Christmas tree area that is being, a lot that's being used, or construction lot that's being used. This is not temporary. In fact, he confesses just now, he's now gone from $300,000 for this temporary permit to $700,000 for a temporary permit to use it for 12 months. 700,000. Does that sound temporary to you? Does that sound like it meets the CEQA qualifications of something that is, what is the precise wording of the statute in order to fall within it? It must be negligible? Is that negligible? To increase the square footage by 20%, increase the patron count by 50, increase in 75, increasing the patrons in the restaurant by 50%? Is that negligible? I don't think so. Is it, or is it? No expansion. No expansion. Of course not. He doesn't meet CEQA. It's not exempt under CEQA. It is certainly not negligible and is certainly an expansion. He confesses that. He's just done it again tonight. No, the real rub here is what they're trying to do is they're trying to say, notwithstanding what we were allowed to do, we've been getting away with something for an awful long time. By God, we want to continue doing it. Does that sound like the basis to give someone a temporary permit? Does that sound like the basis to give them, to make a decision like this? I don't think so. And that's been our complaint all along, is the big bugaboo is the amplified sound, yet no one will address it. I asked the zoning administrator, I said, hey, there's a municipal code section on this and he shot right back and he says, oh, that's sound trucks. You're wrong, sir. And then you read it word for word and it's not just sound trucks, it's amplified sound. You want to do something for a temporary permit for them, don't allow them any amplified sound outside.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes, sir.
Can you please, we're going to go ahead and stop there and then I'm going to allow the commissioners to ask you any questions at this point. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the appellant? Vice Chair?
Thank you. How long have you lived in your home adjacent to the property?
Built a lot in 1996. We took our plans through planning. We built the house in, on the back, House 354 in approximately 2013. It took two years. It was completed in 2013. We started the other house 2014, finished in 2015. We've lived there since July of 2000. We've been to the house off and on, monitoring the house and spending some weekends there to enjoy the... and spending some weekends there to enjoy the, the view since two thousand, since nineteen ninety-six. We've lived there since July of two thousand thirteen.
Okay. During that time, had you had other issues with noise from, you know, we can go back to ninety-six or whatever if you noticed things then, but more importantly, since you've lived there before two thousand twenty, did you have other complaints or problems with noise?
We had less complaints or problems. When we did raise issues about, well, first of all, they've used the garden area, and they've used a larger share of the garden area, but when it just involved folks, you know, in an afternoon, lazy afternoon, we didn't object to it. Okay? But when, when they ramped up the amplified sound to bands, then we objected to it. And their answer was, we can do this. Stay out of our way. We have a permit from nineteen seventy-seven. And I point out in response that, in that same question, we got in dispute with them in twenty-two, twenty-three, and that's when they went to Mr. Oscar Orozco, who got it right. Orozco says eighteen twenty-two. We've, we've included that email correspondence, and he gets it spot on. He says, you need to amend to do what it is you're doing. You're not allowed to have events per your permit, notwithstanding what he's claiming today.
So did your disagreements begin, or maybe your first complaints perhaps, are speaking out to the restaurant back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, early on?
I can't recall a lot of repetitive complaints back then, no. It, it ramped up COVID, post-COVID. Then it started with a whole lot of rather raucous carrying on with disc jockeys and bands, and, and that's the complaint. And the mitigation proposed by RK Engineering does not mitigate second and third floor impacts because it's line of sight, travel for sound. I'm a contractor as well. I've been a contractor. I've built all manner of houses and industrial buildings and office buildings, and everyone knows that line of sight is the issue. So you raise the wall a little bit, doesn't solve the problem. You know, you got a band back there, a disc jockey back there. The, the objection of the neighbors, Melman's, myself, and everyone else that's adversely impacted by this largely relates to people choking up the parking on Hazel, which is where they're getting that extra space, and they park there, and the amplified sound. If the amplified sound cut off at eight P.M., I probably wouldn't be here arguing with him. It's the amplified sound, eight P.M. and after, that is just drives people nuts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Any other commissioner comments?
I have a question. So I, I got a little confused by, are you appealing the parking ratio or are you appealing the sound?
We're, we're, we're appealing the issuance of the permit.
For the sound?
Temporary permit in total. In other words, if, if, if I were to design how he could do something temporary.
It's just, it's just one or the other. Are you, are you, is, is it the sound or the parking ratio? Because you were going down a parking path. I'm just trying to understand.
Well, it's both.
Okay. So the parking ratio and the sound is, is the grounds for the appeal?
And we had proposed.
And how often do they have rock bands? I, 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 I'd live down the street. I've never heard of rock, but maybe I'm not, I'm my next door, so I don't know. Is that bands? How, how often in your experience do bands play there?
Well, they have two hundred weddings a year that they talk about having. I'd say that sounds about right.
Two hundred bands a year?
They don't have the bands a year. The, the bands are less frequent than the disc jockeys.
Okay.
But the disc jockeys belt out as much sound, amplified sound as a band.
And, and so the basis on the sound perspective of what you're concerned is that the sound mitigation effects that the defendant or appellant, or, excuse me, you know, the applicant is, you're saying is, you know, what they're doing is not going to mitigate sound to you? Is that?
That's correct.
So it's a sound mitigation in which would mitigate sound, but just not to you?
Well, 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 let me respond directly to the question. The, the mitigation efforts include a modification of sound output at ten feet, if I remember correctly. And so by artificially limiting the amplification permitted from that speaker or that source that at ten feet measures a certain level, and I thought it was eighty-five decibels, I may be unsure, at that level, it would not hit someone standing on the other side of a wall.
So are you saying the city's interpretation of the sound decimal readers is different than yours? Is that correct?
No.
You don't agree with the city's interpretation of the sound? I guess my question to that is, if the applicant is, is proposing to do a half million dollar sound mitigation measure that's overseen by an engineer, are you disputing the fact that that is qualified? That is, it's a real mitigation? Are you, are you, are you appealing because you don't think that is, that is going to mitigate the sound?
I think, I think sound can be mitigated by a wall that is six foot tall for six foot people on the other side of the wall because of the sound.
I guess it's just yes or no. I wasn't really looking.
No, I can't answer it, yes or no. The second and third floors of the buildings are adversely impacted because they go over the wall. That's the point. In other words, it's directional. It's line of sight directional. Now, you know, could they mitigate by modifying the amount of output at the ten-foot mark? Sure. But who's monitoring? Our objection was.
I, I, I think, I think, just, we don't need to go into it. I, I think I understand based upon those questions.
Well, we proposed, we proposed independent monitoring being required. That's what we proposed. In other words, someone independent.
But you also proposed a parking modification here as well, right? Are you?
They don't have the parking. They can't, they can't increase, they cannot ever, unless they're going to find more land somewhere else to park, they're, they're going to be stuck at eighty-seven or seventy-two spaces because of the correct measurements.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any more comments? Okay. Thank you for your time, Mr. Katanzerite. We're going to move on.
Thank you.
To any other speakers in the audience that would like to, well, actually, I'd like to ask the applicant if they'd like to make a quick three-minute rebuttal.
Thank you for the opportunity. I, I don't need three minutes. I think the case is really that this operation and the noise being produced hasn't changed in decades. I, I think also we've made an improvement to that space, fully permitted and planned. There's a gazebo in the back area that shows our, you know, intent to use the area. And again, that was put in, I believe, in nineteen ninety-six. So we have longstanding, continuous operation of that space, and we're looking for a continuation of that, and therefore the, the confidence to make a major investment in that facility for the enhancement of the neighborhood.
Thank you. One quick question from.
Can we maybe hear from your sound engineer? I think you said he was here to, to address some of these other things, like the directions of the speakers and the restriction on the heavy bass equipment and such, and how that might help?
Hi, good evening, commissioners.
I don't know if it's possible to not make this an elongated process where we get too technical, but maybe it's just a quick response to Commissioner Saleen, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Brian Estrada with RK Engineering Group. We prepared the noise study. We've been working with Ryan and his restaurant for well over a year now on this project. The main emphasis, the main bottom line on this is, comes down to the mitigation measures, which we've been working very closely with Ryan and his team to implement. We've used 3D noise modeling. We've done in-the-field sound level measurements all under the compliance with the city's municipal code, adhering, and with the goal of adhering to the city's noise standards. And with the implementation of the mitigation measures and the conditions of approval, which include increased wall heights, acoustical paneling, and acoustical treatment within the property itself, as well as restrictions on the decibel levels of noise that will be coming out of the property, all of those things in combine will effectively reduce noise levels to be below the city's limit at any adjacent residential property. And so that's really what the bottom line is, that Ryan has agreed to that, or Mr. Lai has agreed to that, and that we are, you know, we've, we've done multiple analysis to support that. I don't want to get into too much of the detail in terms of the technical issues, but I think that's the bottom line. If there's any other specific questions you guys have.
Got it. So how about the concern about noise levels going to second and third stories? How's that addressed?
Yeah. We analyzed second story and third story noise levels within the report. We analyzed both outdoor and interior noise levels. And what we found is that the ambient noise levels at the property, we did noise level measurements both without live music and with live music, that the ambient noise levels by themselves exceed at times the city's noise standards. So you're dealing with an environment that is not what you could, you know, not always in compliance. It's not a quiet environment always near PCH and the street. The noise levels outdoor with the mitigation measures will be below the city's noise limit, which would put them well below the ambient levels. So in order to measure any kind of discernible increase, you've got an ambient noise level that's, that's well above what the, the restaurant would be putting out with, with the mitigation measures in, in place.
Does that satisfy your comment? Excellent comment regarding ambient noise. Appreciate that. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, based on the advice of counsel, it'd be wise to give Mr. Katanzerite an opportunity to rebut the rebuttal, just for the record, to give him that opportunity if he chooses to.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Katanzerite, would you like to have an opportunity to rebut the rebuttal? We'll give you three minutes, please.
First of all, the ambient noise level in that area does not run fifty-five decibels. I don't know where he's coming up with that. And in fact, in, in a recent complaint we had to code enforcement, they actually sent a young fellow out, very earnest chap, and he measured ambient noise, and he said, no, ambient noise is low, and this is seventy-plus decibels. But they wouldn't count that because he was standing at the front of three, five, two. And so the city, however, decided, decided, oh, you got to be measuring it at the third floor. Now, mind you, if you're measuring it at ground level and you're getting seventy-plus in the front of three, five, two, you're going to be well over seventy-plus on the second and third floor. This, the, what, what my, what my friends RK are talking about is, again, he did not address, because it's a fact, that Mr. Dickerson found that they did not include crowd noise as an overlay in order to get readings under fifty-five decibels at first, second, and third floors. You add crowd noise, which, imagine seventy-five people talking, especially when music's playing, crowd, it amps up, and you're over seventy-five again. That's the problem. The problem is, look, if you were going to give many break at all, independent measurements that have teeth, they violate, they lose the permit. This stuff about affecting the poor neighbors to have to police that they're now making too much noise is not the way this should go. They, they, first of all, I don't, I still don't hear anyone saying, well, you're wrong about, you're wrong about the sound measurement. You know, you're wrong about the municipal code, which says you, thou shalt get a permit separately for each of these events, each of these events, and thou shalt stop at eight P.M., which seems pretty wise to me. So I, if, if you had independent, I would feel more trusting of the process if, if the city had at least implemented the one single item I said we need the most. We need to have independent sound measurement, something, which was what Dickerson talked about as well, that he is sometimes engaged by cities or by, on behalf of the city, on behalf of the applicant who's operating to measure sound independently and report it to everyone who's, who's affected. And if the violations occur, they immediately, there are immediate consequences. That's not what is proposed here. They're proposing that the fox guard the hen house, meaning Mr. Wilson, who's certainly an earnest chap, but he's not going to self-report himself as being violating the noise ordinance, and, and, and instead, implement a process whereby there's independent, there's an independent measurement that they pay for. They don't need to pay RK. They could just buy, hire an independent who reports to everybody, and the consequences are, three times, you're out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. At this time, we'll invite people from the audience to come up and speak. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment? Please state your name for the record, and remember that we're on a three-minute time limit.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Jim Limecooler, and I believe, I sent a letter, emailed a letter to the members of the planning commission, so I hope you received it. Now, I'm just going to read it to you and for the record. Dear members of the planning commission, I'm writing to express my strong, my strong support for the project at the Five Crowns Restaurant at the corner of PCH and Poppy Avenue in Corona del Mar. For reference, I live on Poppy Avenue on the same block as the restaurant on the opposite side of the street. My wife and I moved to this home in two thousand seventeen from Newport Coast, where we had lived since nineteen ninety-six. We understood moving to Corona del Mar was going to be quite different than Newport Coast. Newport Coast is a very quiet community, whereas the Village of CDM is more urban and has a lot more congestion, noise, and activity than we were used to. If we'd wanted a more serene life, we could have chosen to stay in Newport Coast or to move somewhere that was quieter. We're very happy with our move here, and we enjoy our more robust, albeit noisy, life in the village. For the record, we are frequent diners at Five Crowns inside door and have been dining there long before we moved closer to it. We enjoy dining in all areas of the restaurant and have enjoyed numerous events on the patio as well. Five Crowns is certainly an important part of Corona del Mar, as well as the City of Newport Beach in Orange County. The nearby parking lot is busy every evening. I know it is an important, iconic, responsible business that predates most homes on our street. It should be congratulated and supported by the City of Newport Beach and its officials. It's my understanding that the restaurant is proposing to make a significant investment in sound mitigation to minimize the impact on the surrounding neighborhood in conjunction with this limited permit. These efforts coincide with their other efforts to be respectful of their neighbors. I believe this permit will allow the outdoor patio to operate as late as ten P.M. Again, this business was here long before we bought our home, and we were aware of where we were buying and are willing to put up with what it brings into our lives. Again, it is a more urban, noisy place where businesses operate. I'm confident that the investment in the restaurant will only enhance the neighborhood and make it better for everyone involved, the business and the neighborhood. I strongly urge the planning commission to approve this permit application. The continued success of Five Crowns is important to the Village of Corona del Mar and the City of Newport Beach. Thank you for your service to our community and your dedication to making Newport Beach such a great place to call home. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Dwight Manley. I also wrote a letter. I first bought a house in Newport Beach in nineteen eighty-seven and have owned homes, built homes, all over Newport Beach for quite a long time. I own the house at the end of the street on Ocean at thirty-seven nineteen. So my wife's favorite street is Poppy, so we go by there all the time. I've never experienced the, a loud band or anything like that. We go to side door. To me and to a lot of my friends, I've been at Big Canyon thirty-three years. A lot of people are seventy-five, eighty years old that I'm friends with, that place is an institution. It's, it's a treasure of the community. And to juxtapose, I'm heavily involved in downtown Brea, the majority owner. And to juxtapose, I'm heavily involved in downtown Brea, the majority owner. We have Imperial Highway, you have PCH. I have a lot of residents. We own the homes, the rentals, there's a village around it that was built by one of the Watt family people that wanted to emulate Corona del Mar. We have to deal with these things all the time because a downtown is a living thing. And in the process of keeping it alive and helping it prosper, things come up. I have to say that in my nearly twenty-five years of dealing with things like this, and I thought I'd seen it all, I sympathize because you guys are dealing with somebody that's obviously hell-bent on achieving something that, at the end of the day, if he had his way, I think it would be very harmful to what this is. This is a, I'm involved now, I had to come here two days ago because of this redo, the Corona del Mar thing and these weird things they want to add. And you have billions and billions of dollars of value there, but from people that, no matter how much money they have, they're in flip-flops and shorts, and it's a lifestyle that the Five Crowns emblem, it's an emblem of that. And post-COVID, this is where I saw it, right when COVID happened, we shut down the street, I carpeted it, put up booths, and I brought everybody out, and we survived, and we leaned into it. You have a different world post-COVID, and that's why this outside thing is critical. One other thing that I think a factoid is, that I learned in the thing that just came up, when this nineteen seventy-seven thing and your parking issues happened, and their parking was restricted to whatever, those streets were one-sided loaded. You couldn't park on two sides back then. So the parking's essentially double for everybody, so I wouldn't hold them to something with this new thing. Go look that up, because the neighbors that have been there fifty years brought this up. So at the end of the day, the solution that I think they're proposing is overly generous from the applicant, because I think it should be later. I think ten o'clock really is not pushing the envelope. And I think that if somebody needs a little extra something with, you know, like the monitoring of it after twelve months, you guys can overcome it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Okay, seeing none. Seth, this opportunity to make any comments for the record?
Yes, Chair. I just have a few comments to make in regards to Mr. Katanzerite's comments about the requirement for a sound amplification permit. So that code section is Section ten point thirty-two point oh nine oh, and we do have exceptions within that code. And so Exception E actually exempts activities regulated by a use permit or other land use control under the provisions of Title twenty. So by having a use permit or a limited-term permit, that exempts the requirements for obtaining a sound amplification permit. In regards to the comments about parking, so the limited-term permit does allow for flexibility in land use that might not otherwise comply with our code. But there was also an Assembly Bill twelve seventeen that was passed recently, and that provides temporary relief to allow the continuation of these temporary patios, kind of in response to COVID, and allowing restaurant operators to continue operating their patios. And it provides the authority to the city to waive parking, to allow for that continued use, and that is referenced in the resolution. In terms of the CEQA exemption, although it is called a Class One Existing Facilities exemption, within the CEQA guidelines, it does allow for the addition of existing structures up to fifty percent or up to twenty-five hundred square feet, and so this patio falls within those thresholds.
And just the last comment regarding the appellant's clarification for condition number ten.
That is intended only to apply to the use of the expanded patio, so limiting the number of vents four times per year. And so we would recommend providing that clarification to the condition.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Just for the record, I wanted to point out something that was stated in the December fourth, two thousand and twenty-four letter that was received by the appellant. I just wanted to point out, the fact that staff did not respond to each and every allegation from the appellant doesn't mean that they conceded any point, or it's an omission by Sidlet, so just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussion and action. Commissioners.
Yeah, just more of a question for staff. Just if this was approved this evening, and it goes forward, and all of the mitigation's done for the noise, if, if it does not meet those decibel requirements, what's the process there? Is it, is it on the applicant there to correct? Does the city come in and revoke the permit? Just kind of the clarification of what that process would be.
Yes, anticipate that would be more complaint-driven. So if we received a complaint, a code enforcement officer will go out, take noise measurements. If we identify there is a violation of the noise standard as conditioned, we'll provide a notice of violation to the applicant, and then we'd try to work with him to get into compliance.
Vice Chair?
Maybe I do have more questions for staff. Sorry. Oh, did they point to you?
Commissioner Lowry, or Langford, excuse me.
Thank you, Chair. Just because we've dealt with it so much, the noise contours, in the airport area, we have noise contours for the airplanes, and that made a big difference to stuff that we've been approving in the airport area. I remember with Malarkey's, there was, there's road noise contours for major arteries in our city, and over at this property, there's noise contours for PCH, adopted maps that have noise contours mapped on top of them. And I'm looking at one, because it reminded me, and that there's a seventy, sixty-five, and a sixty CNEL lines, and it appears to me that, you know, both of these properties lie within the, either the sixty or sixty-five CNEL line for noise. So it would, I would imagine the ambient noise, regardless of what it is on-site at the moment, of reading those kind of noise contours would likely kind of override, and that would be the threshold for whatever it is that we're trying to monitor. Because I remember trying to talk this out with, with that, with Malarkey's, and, because I just didn't want anyone to fall in some trap, like, on both sides, you know, we're all trying to live together, so trying to figure out where the benchmarks are. But that seemed like it would be the fairer route to go, instead of pretending that this is just an ordinary neighbor next door. This is not just an ordinary neighbor. It's a commercial, there's commercial zone next to, it's mixed-use, commercial stuff next to, you know, residential properties, but it's also within these, you know, noise contours that are different than most places in the city. So I wanted to see if that was, if I was kind of tracking on the right thing as far as if we did have code compliance run out there. Are they tracking it from these noise contour lines, or are they kind of monitoring fresh as if they were just going to CDM and there's a noise complaint on a neighbor?
That's a good question. So our code essentially establishes like the exterior noise standard to be fifty-five decibels at the residential property, unless the ambient is higher. And so in the event that the ambient noise levels are higher, that becomes the standard, and so that's what we would measure against.
Miss, Vice Chair? Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. So I'm going to, I'm just going to think about this from two different levels, one in my planning commissioner hat, and just two kind of high-level. I think just from more of a high-level perspective, the way that I interpret or see this is, we have a restaurant that's been there before all the houses, and so clearly, and everybody around them knows they moved in next to a restaurant. This is just kind of high-level. The main concern for this is the sound outside, what he's saying is, is post-COVID. But we have an app, we have an applicant that is attempting to rectify, modify the sound barriers, and acquiesce based upon the complaint of a neighbor to spend, it seems to me, like an awful lot of money to, to be a good neighbor and to, and to support and stop the noise in which I feel like the appellant isn't, hasn't, it's like, it's not even there yet, is telling them it's wrong, but not even giving them the chance, which I don't really understand. And then when I feel like I break it down with the appellant from more a planning commission perspective, we're debating, we're debating reading levels, we're debating reading locations. And so that's why we have engineers, and that's why we have staff that reviews this and makes these decisions and opines on it, and that's why we have code. And that's what's done here. So in my opinion, from a code perspective, you were, staff's making a recommendation following the letter of the code, and we have an applicant that seems, in my opinion, be extending a really large olive branch to a neighborhood to be a good neighbor and is, for some reason, seems to be getting heat, and they haven't even finished, they haven't even like, they haven't done the wall yet, like, it's not even there. So to me, that frustrates me a little bit. I'm, I'm very supportive of the applicant. I'm not supportive of the appellant. I will make a motion on this, and I will, in that motion, in the conditions of approval for number three, like to push that out for one year. I think that's logical, that makes sense, give the wall the opportunity to be built and to make the revisions, to do it right per the code, maybe even above and beyond. I will also support condition number ten, and have that be just for the subject area of the backyard, four times per month. I think that's logical as well. So that's where I'm at with this. I'm a little, kind of frustrated a little bit by the fact that we're actually even here talking about this, to be perfectly honest. And so I'm happy to make the motion now, but that's where I'm at.
Okay. I think I heard a motion. Did Commissioner Harris, did you'd like to?
May I make an amendment to your motion, if you wouldn't mind? Condition number eight specifies what days they can go past nine PM, so weekends and federal holidays. I'd like to add New Year's Eve as, it's not a federal holiday. I was married on New Year's Eve, so I'm like particularly sensitive to this. So I'd like them to at least go till ten on New Year's Eve as well.
Mr. Saline?
And I'm supportive of that as well.
I'd like to actually add on to what Commissioner Elmore's pointed out. I think the applicant's making a tremendous amount of effort to try to help alleviate some concerns in the neighborhood. My concern, though, is on condition number three, is that it's taken a year to get, almost a year to get the temporary permit. And I'm concerned that to build a wall, do the studies, and then go apply for the regular permit, I don't think a year is adequate. I'm wondering if we can go longer than a year to give sufficient time to allow all this to fully transpire, and to, if there's modifications that need to be made, that can be done.
Staff, is that possible?
Yeah, that's possible, so we can allow for one year with an allowance for an extension for an additional year by the director.
And with my motion, with my motion, I'm supportive of that as well.
Then I'd second your motion.
Okay, well, I heard a motion, a second. I absolutely agree with.
Chair, Roseanne, does that include Commissioner Langford's amendment?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, and my motion includes Commissioner Langford's amendment to New Year's Eve as well.
And the second.
For the record.
Yes, as well.
Let's call for a vote. Okay, congratulations to the applicant. Moving on. Staff and Commissioner items, item number four, motion for consideration. Commissioners, any motions for reconsideration? All right, hearing none. Then item number five is the report by the Community Development Director.
Chair, should we get Commissioner Bartow?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's that?
Nah.
Item number five, report for the Community Development Director.
Hi, it's good evening. High Memorial Deputy Director, I just want to note that we don't have a planning commission item for the second meeting in December, so this is our last meeting of the year. So just want to thank the Commission for all your service, and wish you all happy holidays, and our next meeting will be on January ninth.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you as well.
We're overworked over here.
All right, does anyone from the audience wish to comment?
On.
All right, for the director's report. Then, please.
It's on the director's report.
Please come up. Well, I don't think we can hear anything about Five Crowns at this point. It's already been.
May I offer a question without the expectation of a response?
If you could make it, make it quick. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know what the benefit would be, but please go ahead.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. My name is Joan Oldfield, and I live on Hazel, several houses down from where Ken lives. The question that I have is, we have now conceded to start this permit, which I actually am very happy about. But I also heard in there, how do we, as the neighbors, complain? Because I will tell you, I have called the restaurant to complain about the noise. I don't call the police. I'm not that kind of neighbor. So my question is, what do we do as a neighborhood, and do we have to police the restaurant?
I'll go ahead. I mean, maybe I'll allow staff to respond. I think that the answer is, you need to call the police department, or code enforcement.
We do have code enforcement, and then after the hearing, I'll give you my card. We'll have a phone number for the complaint line for you to call for any complaints. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Not my favorite thing to do. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. And ladies.
Okay, then, moving on, are there any requests for excused absences this evening? All right, seeing none, then we are adjourned.